Call the meeting to order, roll call, vote.
Mr. Sneeden?
Here.
Mrs. Danforth?
Yes.
Mr. Bruder?
Here.
Mrs. Hodges?
It says 6:59.
Mrs. Proustman?
Yeah.
It does, you're on your computer too.
Okay, with the President and Vice President, Board absent tonight, we do need to have an election of the President pro tem to conduct the meeting as per Board Policy BCC. So at this time, I'm hoping for nominations to have someone fulfill that role tonight. I'll nominate Dennis.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to have Dennis be President pro tem for the meeting. Roll call.
Mrs. Danforth?
Yes.
Mr. Bruder?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Proustman?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
I've stand.
All right, let's rise for the President.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Audience participation. Gabby?
Todd Raffet would like to address the Board regarding item 7.1.
And Cappy has the clock.
Nope, Chris.
Chris has it.
Chris has it.
This is the time.
You ready?
Yes, go.
Thank you for your time, Board. Thank you so much also for your consideration. President Sneeden, Dr. Newhart, I appreciate all of your efforts, and we appreciate your flexibility, because this was something that was really important to the teachers on the insurance issue, and we appreciate the fact you didn't say, you know, darn the torpedo's full speed ahead, the thought that you actually listened. And what I want to address was something else there was program, item 7.1, program evaluation. And one of the things I've been talking to the staff lot, because we've been talking a lot to our staffs lately, is there's other factors as well as wages. And it's one of the things, it really doesn't cost anything, but it can be very important. And so in doing this, I looked up some other things, like Chris, I looked up Google, and Google, as one of their tools that they use at Google, is they make puzzles. They create marble rollers, they make games, because software design is so much about solving problems, solving problems and then also applying those to us and making a solution. It's the same way with teachers. I always ask people the same thing, what's the profit of being a teacher? What is it we do? We know that we're not going to get rich. We know that for the most part, you're going to serve in a classroom, maybe affect so many kids, but what is our profit? What do we do that inspires us? And for me, and I think a lot of teachers, it's inspiration. The thought that you can reach out and you can touch a young person, and you can bring them up out of a tough situation and inspire them to raise to new heights. And one of the things that I noticed when I went through the program reviews and evaluations was the inspiration factor. I mean, data analysis, I don't see any little kids, you know, little kids, when they learn to play basketball, they don't say, hey, let's go out and run some baselines, yeah, let's do some wind sprints. You don't start with that stuff. Instead, you start with the possible basketball, and there are always something, I'm Michael Jordan, well, I'm this person, I'm that person. It's the same way, it's no different for us teachers. If we make the focus of our instruction, for instance, one of our main priorities right now is data analysis. Started six years ago, a razor, a laser sharp focus on data analysis, we have to keep data notebooks. Data shouldn't drive our instruction, it should be something we use. For instance, every time you log into Google, you are giving them data. They have developed a system where you don't even notice that you're giving them data. And in our district, our teachers are burdened down with so many things already, and there really is no inspiration in it. I've never known anyone yet in my career that said, I want to go into two teachings so I can analyze data. We have people that are hired to do that, and it's important we do it, but it's not one of those inspirational factors. We also have too many, in our opinion, we have too many things that basically take us away from our primary purpose, which is to teach and to instruct. We're pedagogy-rich and inspiration-poor. In other words, to inspire us is what we need. We have to somehow inspire our students not to listen to people that are giving them bad advice. Sometimes a drug dealer can be very inspirational, they can have a big wad of cash, fancy car, that's great inspiration. We have to inspire our students to come out of that system and to get an education. So what I'm asking is, is please, as you do these program and value evaluations, look at the program evaluation that says, does this inspire or does this uninspire? We all understand that we have things we have to do as far as teachers, we understand that. But at the same time, there are certain things that could we set aside? Could we do what Google did and make data analysis something that is done for us rather than us having to spend enormous amounts of time doing that process? Is there a better way? I would also encourage this Board to please, and Dr. Newhart, to please bring teachers in. As you do these program evaluations and say, what do you think on this? Rather than wait until we have to come here and ask you to please revoke this action as we just found with the insurance. Again, I thank you for your time, and again, thank you so much for your consideration.
Any other questions?
That's it.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, moving on. Agenda approval. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Mrs. Danforth?
Yes.
Mr. Bruder?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Proustman?
Yes.
Okay, superintendents report, Dr. Newhart.
Briefly, I just want to refer you to the future meetings and events. We'll have the special board meeting this Thursday, 4:30 or 5 o'clock.
Can we amend that to 5? That would help me out tremendously. Is that a point?
It hasn't been posted yet.
It hasn't?
It will be tomorrow. Well, it's not that we can't agenda it until 24 hours ahead.
5 is fine. I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, we'll go 5 o'clock then on Thursday. That is the 29th.
But we're still doing the work session at 4:30?
And, no, we'll start at 5 o'clock with the regular session. I'm just looking to follow up with the insurance and get it approved, and then also then move into the comp study. And we can adjourn the regular session, go into the work session after that, and basically delve into the comp study and the work session.
Okay.
Okay?
You might change 9.2 on the back and scratch the 4:30 and put 5.
Correct.
What time do you want to post the work session?
I'll get with you on that. You'll be following that. Shouldn't take very long, I would hope, on the insurance, pending the meet and confer finality tomorrow.
Can't you just say to follow, or do you have to have a time?
A work session could follow the adjournment of the regular session without necessarily a time. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, consent agenda. We have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I do want to make sure the minutes of the October 12th meeting were corrected to reflect the motion on the teacher position at Eugene Field. And then also, we did add 5.12. We had the motion to approve that agreement last month, or last board meeting, the 12th, at the 3%. This is actually the signed agreement on both parties with the 3% either way.
The real estate.
Right, broker agreement.
Thanks, Lauren. Like, 3% of what? The real estate brings it.
3% on the...
The Hall and Arrow.
Right, on the Hall and Arrow.
I thought it was your 6%.
Well, it's 3% for the broker, 3% for this.
Correct. We went back to 6.
So 6% is the total. Because it was...
Three and a half.
I thought it was a motion, 6% wasn't a motion.
You approved it.
It was, but the agreement wasn't. Correct.
God.
So this makes it all official.
Have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Yes.
Mr. Bruder?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Proustman?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Okay, personnel and finance treasurer report, Wes.
Assuming that's you.
Anybody have any questions? Do you guys have time to review them?
Yeah, I sent you my questions and you answered some.
Because we're on the bill. This is the finance report.
Oh, yes.
That's okay. This is still very basic. We're going to develop something that's much more detailed, that'll give you more information. We've got, you know, the first one is the, we spread it out by fund, what the balances are in every fund. Then you got the revenues, September revenues we collected, broke down by fund, and these are DESI funds. The revenues are all DESI funds. And then the September expenditures.
It is nice to see you all like this, though.
Kind of broke it down by fund. We haven't spent any bond money. If you notice, 9 is zero, that's your bond money. We haven't spent anything out of there yet this year. It's also capital. And these are the correct DESI codes that we are using, or modifying everything to get to these codes.
These aren't changed.
And the very last sheet, something that you guys haven't seen before, these are all of our investments. This is all of our cash that's available. Where we have our, it's got a list of every bank that we use. If you notice, all the CDs are $248,000. That's to make sure we stay under the FDIC insurance. That's why there are so many of them.
I was going to say, yeah. It's a big tip there.
Yeah, I figured you guys would catch that. They're all short-term. We've got, I've got a meeting with UMB Bank in two weeks. They're going to come in and give us some other options for investing our money short-term. It should draw us a lot more money than what CDs do.
Are the financial advisors going to...
They will, they will time in a little bit. I've got to get LJ Hart some stuff tomorrow. I was waiting until, they wanted the compensation study. They wanted age of our buildings, classes, classrooms in every building, and then our class sizes. They wanted all that information, so I got that, Tim got me that today, and Chris is working on getting me the age of the buildings and classrooms in the buildings. Hopefully, I have all that tomorrow. I told LJ Hart I would give him that information, and then once he gets that, he'll compile some data. Told him that we were looking at doing, well, longer capital leases for like computers, those kind of things will give some options. We want to know our bonding capacity, you know, what different levels we can borrow at, how much tax increases, decreases, those kind of things we will need to do. They will also help us with the proxy, if we want to do proxy, and those kind of calculations like that.
Very good. I didn't realize we had so many different ones.
Robert asked me how many accounts we had when we started, and I said, I think there's like 30 or 40. Well, I think that's pretty close. I mean, I didn't, I haven't sat here and actually counted them.
There's a lot. But it's really good information to have. We've never seen it before.
Now, do you guys want to see it like this every month? Because what I can do is I can do investments and just consolidate them all together.
I think we need to see the change month over month in the running.
Well, your first, you know, like I said, I could do CDs and just give you a total of how much we have invested in CDs, so you don't have to...
No, but when I look at CDs, I vomit, so we need to have...
Yeah, I know.
I don't know who advised the district to invest like this, but they must have been out of their mind.
If, they're short, yeah.
Is it the base? That's why you're looking at some other options.
We are looking into other...
Well, being streamlined, there's no excuse for CDs, there is...
You're correct. We are, most of these are very short-term, six months, six to 12-month CDs. I think they all come due in this spring, so we are looking into other investment opportunities.
Good.
Okay. Any other questions? It's a lot of information.
Well, how come some of the accounts have zero? Up towards the top.
Okay, your activity account, there's zero, there are accounts at the bank, okay, let's see. You see the operating repo account there, the UMB operating repo, $13 million? Okay, there's money that goes in and out of these accounts on a daily basis, okay? So they, they actually are used, but they're zeroed out every day. All the money actually goes into the operating repo, so that would get a higher rate of interest on a daily basis, that's why. So those zero accounts are accounts that there's transactions that are, and then they're zeroed out at the end of the day, and then they reinvest our money.
Okay.
All right, so they go negative during the day, they put the cash in to cover it, and then they go...
Does that make sense?
What's it, what's it, they're holding, yeah, I mean, that's kind of the way they are.
It's kind of in and out, okay.
They're, they're in and outs is what they are. They zero out every day.
Okay.
Can we, can we entertain a motion to accept the financial...
So moved.
Second.
Somebody got emailed.
Mrs. Danforth?
Yes.
Mr. Bruder?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Proustman?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
It was a notification. From Gail, you're late. Apparently, I am.
It was 2:00 and 45 minutes.
Go ahead, Wes.
Bills?
Yeah.
We did have some questions on the bills. Chris sent me some question on Gail Research. That was approved on the...
What page is that?
8th of June.
June, yeah.
Yeah, 8th of June. It's check number 285956. It was approved in June.
Page 2.
Yeah. And that was for software, is what that is. Part of the software. Do you want to know the specific, Tim's or somewhere?
No.
Oh. I think it's the library.
Library software, yes.
That's, yeah, that's what it was. It was over $15,000, right? That's why. Because we just didn't have to remember, you didn't remember that.
And Chris also had a question on the Spencer Fane Bill, and I think Robert got her that information.
Yep.
We don't keep the detail in our office, it stays in the superintendent's. All we get is the invoice, sign by him, saying that he's reviewed it, and then we pay it. And then, I'll look at it.
Thank you.
And then, Cappy, Cappy sent me a list. Okay, the questions she had were on student activity accounts. So there was cheerleading. She wanted to know, it's two, I don't know what the check number is, this number she sent me wasn't the correct check number.
It was a line number.
Oh, it was a line number, okay. Well, we couldn't figure out what it was, but we finally figured out what the cheerleading...
I thought it was the line number, the PO number?
She's got 280084, which...
Well, maybe I'm...
We thought that was a check number, but we couldn't, anyway. What it is, we called the school, we figured out what it was. Yes, the cheerleaders are reimbursing us back for the uniforms when they purchase them.
So I just wondered how that accounting happened.
It's activity funds. We get, we purchase them for the kids because we get them tax exempt.
Sure.
And then they...
Totally makes sense.
So the school bookkeepers keep track of the students, what they owe, their sponsors get them, gets the bookkeeper the information. We keep track of it, and then they check them off, and then they pay us for it.
They have to pay for their own uniforms?
Not all the uniforms. They're, girls, they have extra stuff they have to buy, just like guys do for their awards.
If you're going to keep them, then you buy them for yourself.
Yeah.
You know, it's not like where everybody can wear the same size.
Like the Under Armour stuff, they buy that, and socks, and shoes.
You wear a certain size for, you know...
Any other questions there?
Well, and then, t-shirts, softballs, same thing. It's a student activities. Then she asked about Midwest advertising supplies, again, t-shirts. And then the Missouri Western State University library, we pay $100, I think it was, and that is for our international baccalaureate program.
So the ID kids are going over to Missouri Western?
I don't know how that works.
Does that give them access to it?
There's something with it, it's because we have that, they get, they get access to things. I don't know what it is for sure.
It was just unusual, and I thought, what are we doing with that?
Yeah.
And if we're using it, that's great. I just was curious about that.
It's pretty inexpensive. It's $100 bucks to have that card so we can have access to it.
As long as we're using something. I just didn't imagine somebody walking over there with the card and checking out books, you know?
Yeah.
So there's more to it, obviously, than that.
Well, I think that they can access like...
Online, they can get research material.
Yes, I think they can.
That must be what they use it for.
If they want to borrow books, they can get them from other universities, if they have access to them.
Anyway, so you have your list of bills, then the second list is, of course, the checks that we've already released. Most of those are utility bills. And then, of course, all the officials, all the individual names are officials.
Shall we get a motion to approve the bills?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Danforth?
Yes.
Mr. Bruder?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Proustman?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Personnel report, Wes. You're on a roll.
Uh-uh, it's not me. We're really, we take care of that one.
There we go.
Okay, we have several pieces of information on here. We do have a few appointments that we are looking at. Two of them are new positions that the Board had approved for physical therapists. We've had a few resignations, as you can see on the paraprofessional side, that we've had a few resignations, and a few of the evening Hilliard classes that we've been trying to recruit for as well. We have a few transfers and some resignations. We also have our second round of substitutes that we are appointing or have been working on getting into the system and have gone through their training. Any questions on...
Yeah, what are we doing on the student teacher ratios on the chart at the bottom? Because we've got in grade four, three different schools that are bumping up against or over the DESI limits.
Right. At this point, we aren't making any additional recommendations on those. The one for field, we are recruiting for that position, and we have applicants that the principal is going to be reviewing and interviewing for.
Even though Addison is up against the limit?
Correct.
So is Hyde. Is that a, that's the same as what it started? Is that a, is that a bump from what it was last?
I don't think any of those have changed, do you know?
I don't.
Yeah, from the, from the previous.
My, my point is, I think going forward, I don't think we should be targeting any numbers that are anywhere close to the DESI standard. Just a discussion for the Board to talk about.
I think the goal needs to be desirable or below.
Exactly. Well, and I think we need to review that, as we're preparing our staffing funds for this upcoming year, we also have to take into account the room that we have available for it.
Right.
So, I don't disagree with that. There's preparation that we need to do.
Right.
To get to that point.
So on here, you have the desired number by DESI, and then it says minimum, is that supposed to say maximum, or?
No, they have a minimum, and then they have a desired standard. They don't have minimum, does it make sense?
It doesn't make sense, I'm like, why is it, that sounds like you can't have any less than 25 students, but the desired is 20.
That's, that's the way they call it, I don't know why they've organized that way.
It's because the ratios on the 27s to the 125, 127 is a smaller number. And it's a recommendation, it's a recommendation based on best instructional practice.
And I was thinking that DESI's desired was, was fewer than that. Is this the number that we've come up with as a district?
Do you recall the document I sent to you? That's the document that basically we're going by. It's MSET 5, standard handbook.
It's on there. It's...
Yeah, well, but in that document, I remember reading, and I thought that the numbers that they had were lower than that.
Lower than the 22, 25?
It was lower than that.
We should be targeting those desired numbers on everything, 20, 22, 25, and the reference up top on this chart to the minimums, I think that's kind of misleading. That's, we're saying to everybody, we're acceptable if we're above the desired, or worse than the desired. I don't think that should be the comparative. Comparative should be the budget or the desired number.
I think that's something that we should be working towards. Because there's a lot of classes that have a lot of bodies in them, and when you get to fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, it's a lot of bodies in those little rooms.
My problem is, we have a lot of overhead, we don't have enough teachers. That's my problem. My personal comment, not reflecting anybody's opinion over here, that's my personal comment. Any other questions?
Okay, we need a motion to accept the personnel report.
I mean, we accept the personnel report.
A second.
Discussion.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Danforth?
Yes.
Mr. Bruder?
Yes.
Mrs. Proustman?
Yes.
Okay, old business, 7.1, program reviews and evaluation.
Kendra?
Okay, so based on our discussion last time, the feedback I got was with regard to putting in a cost piece to the program evaluations. So if you're looking at the document on page three, the program planning teams will develop program evaluation plans in order to answer a common set of evaluation questions. So instead of the set that existed, there is now one that says, what costs are associated with the delivery of services, for whatever program that is. And then that goes on with, what is the status of the program's progress toward achieving goals? What do the students and other stakeholders consider strengths and weaknesses of the program? What do staff consider to be the strengths and weaknesses of the program? How does the program, program's actual implementation compare with the program's design? How should priorities be changed to put more focus on achieving goals? And how should goals be changed, any added or removed? So those, that's the framework through which the data will be collected. And that, and so if you go down and look a little bit further, on page five, the document...
So I'm free to pass up the flow chart?
Yeah.
I mean, shouldn't there be a decision-making block in there on the flow chart that says, okay, we're evaluating the costs, we're evaluating the benefit, move forward, yes or no? You should have a decision block.
Yeah.
I don't see it on the flow chart there. Oh, it just doesn't mention costs.
Well, but that's in this part right here. I mean, that's where you're doing your data analysis. Would you like it more specific? I mean, I can make it more specific, but...
That's all right, keep going.
All right. Well, I think that's important, too.
It is.
It is.
She's made tremendous progress, I don't want to...
No, no.
She added it into the place, it's just not on this picture. She added it into the place. It's just not on this picture.
Yeah, it's just when you get to a decision tree, it needs to be part of the decision-making factors. What am I going to assign? Yes or no? What costs have to be part of that?
Absolutely.
The cost benefit analysis needs to be part of it.
They, they do. And so if you go down, and I agree. So if you go down to five, on page five, the sources for data of the evaluation, um, cost is on there. Yeah. So, so then that criteria is there, you know, till, before you get to that decision-making tree. So it would need to be part of the body of knowledge or whatever that you would, you, it couldn't be, it could not have me the rest of the information, if that makes sense. Um, and so, um, the reporting results also are on page five. Now, the costs and that, and that little bulleted, uh, piece right there, those are the costs associated with the action plan. So if the program is to continue, even though you go through all the analysis, which includes the costs, and then you develop an action plan that's to say, well, we need to kind of, you know, shore X, Y and Z up. Or we need to do whatever we need to do to make the program better based on the information. Then you would develop an action plan that would go along with it. And so if you need to develop a website, or if you need to develop whatever it is that you need to develop to, to, um, enhance the program so that its delivery and services to the students is enhanced, then that cost would be associated with the action plan. So you can't just dream away. You'd have to have a, a cost associated with that. So those were the, those were the additions I made to the, to, um, the plan based on last, our last discussion and the last feedback.
You did exactly what we asked you to do, except for the flow chart.
I can make a better flow chart.
Okay, we entertain a motion to accept the program review and evaluation.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Bruder?
Yes.
Ms. Prusman?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Okay, board policy GDBB.
Amy, well, she's walking over here. Um, this is the policy particularly in regarding to workman's comp that we need to really take a hard look at.
Not work comp.
Comp time.
Comp time, I'm sorry, comp time. And whether or not we get to a conclusion here tonight, I don't know if we will or not, but I'll turn it over to Amy.
Yeah, I'm, uh, we're actually asking for what is presented there and I know there's some, some, um, strike through, thank you. I couldn't sit it out. Strike through and things like that. Asking that, that be held. We are doing some further review on the comp time, uh, piece to review what it would look like at various things. Right now, uh, individuals can accrue a comp time up to 240 hours. Um, we don't want to continue necessarily that practice. That might not be our recommendation or won't be our recommendation going forward. But where that's going to land, we're looking at landing potentially no comp time to a smaller amount of comp time that people can accrue, um, before it's paid out. That doesn't mean they won't be paid out overtime. It means they'll, they'll be paid out that overtime versus accruing the comp time.
Okay, ask question?
Sure.
I'll make a statement, ask a question. Traditionally, I mean, there's a reason businesses don't pay comp time or allow comp time because it gets where it's not controllable. It's not managed properly. There's a reason, there's also legal reasons also. People work overtime, they get paid that. So there's budgets for those kinds of things. People see the overtime budgets that get out of control, the overtime gets cut back. This is an equation for complete lack of accountability and control to maintain six weeks worth of comp time and overtime pay. My personal opinion again, don't reflect anybody over here. This is me just speaking. I look at this and I see huge control problems with 240 hours of comp time. Massive. So it doesn't mean it wasn't a benefit that, that impacted our employees one way or the other. It means we've got a control problem. And from a business perspective, I'd never allow that to happen, not in a million years, but that's just my opinion.
So that must have been developed because it was a way to save money. Is that the idea?
It's a way to manage the money properly, make sure it's getting spent in the right areas.
240 is the, the maximum allowed by law. In the private industry, it's illegal to do comp time. Only government can do comp time.
Six weeks worth of stuff.
That's interesting. I didn't know that. Thank you.
Only government.
Other school districts, what, what kind of, do they have?
They're all over the place.
They're all over the place. Some have zero comp time, some have this max. Not, not a lot have the max, the 240. Some have something in between.
Some you have to use it within the next 30 days. Some, they limit the amount. I mean, I've been reviewing, they're all over the place. It's just.
What we want to do is be able to put some costs on, on what this would look like. Number one, if we eliminated, say we went the extreme and eliminated any accrual of comp time, then we would look at paying this out. Right now, well, as of September 12th, which is the last payroll that, that ran, there's about $80,000 worth of comp time sitting out there that would have to be paid out. We will have an updated amount as soon as payroll runs this week on what that, that would be. And at the end of June, that was paid out. So this is just what's accrued.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask. One more.
Well, he paid out last year in overtime and comp time, $325,266.73. That's what we paid out. That doesn't include what they took in actual comp time. Okay, so everybody that's accumulating comp time, there's been several people that have taken it. So I mean.
Well, sure, that's what it's for.
Well, that's where the piece comes in there to control costs. You got to have the piece to control overtime.
How, how are you managing people that take the comp time? They just call in, is that taking a comp day? Do they have to pre-schedule?
It's got to be pre-approved through your supervisor.
How much advance? No, it's a legitimate question.
Well, it's pretty much on the.
Because if I got comp time and I call you and say, hey Wes, I'm not coming in today, do you approve it yet? Okay, but you got to cover me.
No.
If you don't have prior advance, notice, you can't cover that vacancy. This is a massive control problem, not only expense-wise, but on management of resources. It's a huge problem.
Typically left up to the supervisor. My office, they got to give me notice.
And it's not always covered. I mean, these aren't, they take comp time, they're not covered.
If secretary, if secretary takes a comp time, they don't put a substitute secretary.
And again, it's up to their supervisors.
This is basically, needs to be like a January 1 changeover or a, in my opinion, June 30th changeover.
It needs to be for the new fiscal year.
Um, currently right now, comp time does save you dollars. It doesn't help you productivity-wise, okay? Because instead of paying somebody overtime, they're, they're taking a day off. I, uh, we've, we've researched from the different directors and departments and most departments are not bringing in a substitute. When a maintenance worker goes, they're just covering from within, which doesn't help you productivity-wise because it pulls somebody else off the job to help cover somebody else. But you are saying, saving dollars and paying overtime. We need to get the control piece of overtime in place.
Let me just tell this out, okay? I'm not trying to create a big old catfight in here, but if you have somebody leave and you're able to continue to work without building up a massive backlog that continues to build and not replace them, it tells you you got too many people, okay? So you got a whole nother issue here that this is pointing at. You've got management of resources, accountability, all kinds of things. So anytime you would allow comp time and you're not forced to cover that vacancy when they're gone, and you can do that over and over and over again, you got too many people. That's what it tells you. You can do the math on a six ways from sideways. That's what it tells you.
I don't know. I, I can't speak for every department as we're sitting here, but it caused, it can cause an issue in, in my department. I can't afford people to be off.
Your staff, right?
Yeah.
It sounds like we're going to need some more discussion on this and maybe find another district and see how they tackle this. We're not.
This is something we want to bring back. Um, this is something we want to bring back at the next board meeting with additional data costs behind it and examples of what other districts are doing. Like I said, they're, they're all over the board, um, for the most part, but we can put some costs to what we're actually doing here.
Or we can figure out a way to manage it a little better and have those parameters, uh, that Eric's talking about. Maybe, maybe we could keep it, but we, we tighten it up. We, we put rules in that, you know.
240 years.
We want to be accountable every, every hour, but right now it doesn't look like we're going to be able to approve this. So let's, let's just, let's just move this to a work session, come back with more information and we'll deal with it. But how long do we got, Robert?
Again, I think if you want to make a switch over, it needs to occur on January 1 or June 30.
We got time to get it right. And let's don't just forget about this because this is employee benefit. Employees get very angry when, as we know with the insurance. We don't want to stir up another hornet's nest. But perhaps, I think everyone would agree that we need to, uh, we need to be accountable and responsible and tighten this up and everybody's happy. Okay, so we'll just, uh, table that one. Uh, let's, let's go to the employee work schedule.
Thanks, Amy.
The 1516, uh, employee work schedule technically has not been approved. We'll bring in two fold, one to get it approved. I don't think you want to change here in the middle of the stream. This is what they've been predominantly doing over the last several years. 1415 was approved, but the 1516 was not. Um, it does involve basically the staff holidays as you see there, which includes the three days of Thanksgiving, the two weeks of Christmas and the one week of spring break. I think going forward in 1617, that needs to be looked at, but I think at this time, I'm recommending to approve the 1516 calendar as, as proposed.
And this does have the change for central to seven.
To seven o'clock on the graduation time.
I would move to accept the schedule.
Second.
Any further discussion? Chris, you go over that?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Bruder?
Yes.
Ms. Prusman?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes. Okay, Nike, Neil Brothers, team uniform conversation proposal. Lafayette and Benton.
Good evening.
Hi, we missed you last time.
Well, thank you. I missed you all too.
I'm sure you did.
He did. That's so sweet.
That was in that routine, you know, I just feel right sitting at home.
I know.
I'm sure you watched.
Uh, we're at a second pass for the Neil Brothers Nike, uh, arrangement. It's a program validation. It's not a contract. It's not an agreement. It's basically saying they want to do business with Nike, Neil Bros. over a period of time, do their uniform conversions over a three-year cycle. They're pretty much mirror images of each other for Lafayette and Benton. It's pretty cut and dry. There's no cumulative rebates, no nothing, uh, that, anything hidden. It's simply uniform conversion and a brand, uh, strategic buying initiative between the schools and the vendor. Uh, they get a little bit of rebate money, which we will monitor and regulate certainly, just like we're going to do with the Adidas Central. And then six months down the line, we'll kind of evaluate both programs and see if we want a uniform, uh, program, uh, rolled out for all three schools or if they want to keep on going the way they are, renew up with the particular vendors they've got.
But it's all upfront.
It is all upfront. It's transparent. As we can make it and we can walk away from these two agreements at any time if we're satisfied with anything. No penalties, no buybacks, givebacks or.
So it's an agreement. It's not a contract.
Yeah, it's just a, again, it's just a strategic buying, you know, statement saying, we're going to do this and by doing that, we're going to, uh, Nike, Neil Bros. is going to offer up, uh, retail credit that they can use up for regular equipment buys for the student athletes and we will certainly monitor and regulate that like we've already professed.
I'll say this. I stayed up last Friday night. I was over there, had a dance. I went to Hosey and then I went home. Those three boys from Central that were on the football show, they looked so good. They had these, I don't know, like a Parker on with the Central logo. And the coach was there and they all spoke well. I was so proud of them and they looked so good in those uniforms. So I.
So you did like the uniforms.
I liked that team unity. I liked those kids. It was on the news, uh, last Friday.
Well, I have spot checked between the two entities and the pricing is pretty comparable to things that we're buying from Adidas for Central and the things we're buying from Nike, Neil Bros. So there's not a whole lot of disparity there and we'll continue to monitor that.
Great. Sounds good.
Entertain a motion approved.
I mean, that we approved the Nike, Neil Brothers team uniform conversion proposal.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Bruder?
Yes.
Ms. Prusman?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, new business. Board policy IGBC.
First reading on parent family involvement for instructional and other programs. Yeah, these are, uh, this one is DESI recommendation that we need to have in place for our, um, early childhood.
Basically all it is is, um, putting a couple of different statute in there. This isn't coming from MSBA.
No, this is.
We would get to it eventually, but.
Sure. So DESI said you need to make these adjustments.
We need to have this in place for the, um, homeless grant.
So will we vote on this at the November meeting?
At the November meeting.
You good, Lori?
I'm good.
All right. You're always good. All right, IGBCA.
Programs for homeless students.
Homeless students.
So what were the changes on this one again? It's the same thing.
The coordinators, they were added.
That's right, with no apostrophe.
First reading. All right, moving on. 8.3, policy BBB, school board elections.
This is basically what I, we talked about earlier, but you will have the school board elections coming up. Trying to get this in place. This is coming from MSBA to be in line with the statutes ever changed, uh, this past spring in, uh, the upcoming election.
It's what has no signatures. It says three years instead of six years. Is there other stuff?
And I think it's, you're still doing the draw, right?
It's a random drawing for, uh, place candidates on the ballot, so there's no rush to necessarily get in. According to this policy.
Yeah, this is all just because of the, the law changes. Okay?
Okay, BBBA, board member qualifications.
Same, we're going along with the statute change.
So those changes were also law changes? I didn't realize.
Yeah, it was.
Cause I looked at, I remember those particular ones because I was like, oh.
8.5, board policy BBC. Sounds like the news. Board member resignation.
This is the process it'd take for a board member to resign and a.
Where am I? Where do I go here?
And declaration if a vacancy exists.
Okay, 8.6, YMCA agreement, Oak Grove Daycare.
As per the work session, um, attached is the actual agreement.
And how many years do we have left?
And basically, um, this was signed by, um, Melody Smith. We cannot find any location yet where it was board approved. It could have gone back actually into the contract and building the, um, the Oak Grove School, but, um, we've not found that to this date. It is a seven-year agreement from.
Who was president of the board?
What's that?
Who was president of the board of education when this was signed?
Um.
Barbara Moore, was it? Or was it?
No, B. Dan Colgan.
And was Mr. Colgan on the?
May 22nd, 2013.
And was Mr. Colgan on the board of the YMCA at the same time?
I'm, we're, I don't know the answer.
We can find out. I, I, I know without even looking, yeah, probably was.
Currently it is a seven-year agreement. We're in the second year basically of that, or going into third year of that seven-year agreement. Um, we do need to check some further. Um, I, I believe the question is, can we get out of this agreement? Okay, if that's what the board wants to do and moving with some other alternative at, uh, the Oak Grove, um, facility. And that's what we've got to find out.
Are they not doing a good job or what?
Um, the question is in regards to, uh, if we do anything with the Colgan Center as far as shutting it down or changing locations. That would go to Webster, Webster preschool programs. We were wanting to move them to the, uh, area at Oak Grove. That would be the plan concept and the space is currently way underutilized by YMCA daycare.
They pay, they pay the lease from us?
No, there's no money.
That's, I, I just wanted to hear that out loud, yeah. Just that this.
We need more information.
And we'll try to have that to you before the ninth.
So you can't find anything in any board minute that says that this board, that the board approved?
I do know that this, this was, came after because when we were first doing, um, the initiative, this early childhood portion was not a part of the original intent of the building. And, well, it was originally, originally, but then it got changed. But then we came back and then it was decided that they could put this program in place. So I know that it would have been at a different timeframe.
Ms. Bryant, you want to shed some light on this? You have any information on this?
Do you remember any of that?
Yeah, if you, if you recall, the, uh, when the Oak Grove was being built, that the, this wing actually came back as an alternative bill. I think it was the right terminology and it was later approved to add that section to the building. After, after the board, um, saw what it was going to cost to build the two schools and how much money was left, uh, that proposal that was brought back and the board voted to put that wing on.
Because the funds were there.
Because the funds were there.
So it was, it was at a different timeframe.
So they voted to put the wing on, didn't necessarily vote to approve the agreement.
I don't, I don't recall a vote to approve the agreement. The, the vote was to build the wing.
You'd have very good memory if you did. Seems like kind of a minor part after all that's going on.
I think it's ultimately something we're going to forward to legal as well.
Well, at least they know where to look, you know, at timeframe.
I know it came back. I wasn't on the board then, though.
Any other questions there?
Belcher Scholarship Award.
I'll let Debbie brief the board on this.
She's like, no, it's all right.
It was a board scholarship.
It's a board scholarship.
It is a board scholarship and on November 9th, we'll be bringing you three applicants for the board to select, um, to submit for the Belcher Scholarship. Um, I, I believe it's, um, it's for our region, one for MSBA. And then, um, there's the 17 regions, then each one from, each, each region is a winner selected and they're, and I think $750. It's something I believe you do every year. So, and on November 9th, we'll bring you three applicants for your selection for us to submit for our region.
And do the applications close for them? Or have they already?
Oh, do they have a date?
They haven't closed yet.
A lot of them close on the 31st.
Of October?
Yeah. Scholarship stuff.
Um, application period, October 12th. It looks like January 15th, I'm reading right. So, so you'll have it.
We just need to get the St. Joe's School District's representation to that.
I just, I just thought if there were still people whose kids wanted to apply and they were watching or listening.
Right.
Go to the counselor's office or go to the MSBA website.
It would be going to their counselor's office because that's for, they're going to, each high school will submit an application or applicant for the board to select.
So then are we selecting one out of the three?
You're selecting one to represent St. Joe's School District in Region 1.
And it is $750.
Thank you, Mr. Haynes. All right, installation is. All right, installation of security cameras at the Pear Street Warehouse.
Chris Soka.
Okay, we were preparing to put out two bid, the installation of security cameras at the Pear Street Warehouse. This building's about 35,000 square feet, houses, food product, office supplies that we put out to bid, paper product, chemical, housekeeping chemicals, student files, you know, that we have to keep on paying. So there's a lot of assets there. There are no security cameras at this time. So I've been working with the technology staff who know this equipment, and we're preparing to put this out. It would call for about 28 cameras that would cover every square foot of this building and also exterior of the building. So if you are agreement that we pursue this, then we would bring it back to the December 14th board meeting, the bid opening.
Could you throw in some of those cameras for Hosea School in with this bid, maybe?
No, that's a separate project that the technology's working on.
It'd be cheaper if you did it all in one.
I don't think it's the same kind of camera. These are, what I understand, are the highest quality analog cameras, because the digital cameras are much higher, is that right? And they're working on digital.
Have we had any problems with the warehouse? People break it in?
We wouldn't know.
Stuff walking away.
People have taken stuff.
It'd be cheaper, you're a dog.
You did, didn't you?
They took a box of papers.
Nobody would know.
So I have a question, why do we do different kinds of cameras? Why?
Cost. Really, I mean...
Are we gonna be able to tell?
I think that when you're trying to cover the area like you are in a distance, you're gonna need digital to get the resolution, whereas at the warehouse, you're gonna have all these cameras that I think analog would be insufficient.
Okay.
But I understand that a digital camera is probably twice the cost of an analog.
They can get rather expensive, up to like $3,000 to $4,000 per camera.
Well, and maybe you have niches and things that you need more cameras, so if you can be closer.
Somebody else steal the cameras.
Well, see who did.
Cameras are worth more than stuff.
The budget bid for this project is $25,000.
I bought a security system for the Wesley Center, one of those, the turn-on, it shuts off when you need, they broke it and stole that. They didn't steal anything else, they picked my security.
Go for the questions, we'll seek it out to bid and bring that back to...
November?
Well, November 9th will be a bid.
December.
November 9th will be bid process.
Are we doing one or two?
To prove bid process.
One.
Unless there's a special.
Thank you, Sarah.
You're welcome.
All right, we got a donation, Janet Marshall Trust.
Liz? Janet Marshall was a teacher at, was it Hyde?
Oh, yeah.
She retired from Hyde, she passed away in her estate, she left 25% of her holdings, assets to the district. We got the first check of $25,000 weeks ago. They're in the process of selling all of her other belongings, and then we will get another follow-up check later. Stipulation in her donation was it is to be given to teachers for recognition and awards. So we feel that maybe it needs to be passed on to the foundation, since the foundation does that kind of stuff for us on an annual basis, and they can utilize those funds to do that.
Yeah, that makes great sense.
Wow. Thank you, Janet.
Yeah, Janet.
God bless you. Well, that's good news. Okay, future meetings and events, remember the 26th is at 5:00, not 4:30?
29.
Oh, I'm sorry, 29.
The 26th is still at 4:30.
26th.
That's today.
That's today.
Why is that one on there?
Yeah, that should be on there.
To remind everybody.
Everybody has to be here at 5:00.
They confer tomorrow at 4:00.
That's supposed to be, that's what that one's supposed to be at, that.
So the 27th?
The 27th at 4:00 PM.
And we're here?
It's not a work session, it's a meeting confirmed.
And it's here in this room?
The 16th of November is a Monday, is that correct?
Correct.
I may not be here then. If that's the HVAC RFP, we need to pick a different date.
It is...
It is the HVAC RFP.
Don't we have a November 9th meeting?
Yep.
Those are the ones the bids are due, and it's gonna take a little bit to get through the week, to get through the...
Are you gonna be back during that week?
That whole week, I'm probably unavailable.
So then, you're looking at the couple of days before Thanksgiving?
I'm gonna be gone the 21st through the, or for a week there, over Thanksgiving.
You have a better chance to be available like Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday that week?
I doubt it. Leave it on here, I'll see what I can do.
Are you saying that's gonna be for the HVAC and for the insurance? Or what was the other thing we were gonna have on?
Oh, the insurance.
It's a special meeting for that, so there must be a reason.
I thought we were sticking something else on there.
Thursday night is the comp study.
Okay, I was thinking something else, we stuck on that HVAC.
I think they're thinking it's Thursday.
We can't do it later that week, like...
We could do it later that week.
I'm talking about the week of the 9th. The 9th is a Monday, why can't we do the HVAC meeting on Thursday?
Chris, Roy?
The proposals are due on the 9th, but we wouldn't have any time to review them at all.
So if you did them, can't do them on the 12th?
Three days, not enough time to review it on the 12th?
You're talking about looking at them on the 9th, is that what you're asking?
It all depends, Eric, if there's only three proposals, yes. If there's nine proposals, no.
You're telling me it takes more than three days to look at the proposals?
Well, if that's the only thing we're doing.
The only thing I say, I don't ask to move meetings because I come to all meetings, unless there's some crazy thing, this is the one that I want to be at. So if there's some latitude, great, if there's no latitude, you gotta do what you gotta do.
What about Friday? That gives the most...
I mean, that's what I was gonna, to me, it's either be Friday or Friday.
Why don't we try the Friday before? Because you wouldn't work on it on the weekend anyway.
The following Friday.
What about the Fri, yeah, not the night, 10th, the 13th?
Are you going that entire week?
13th is no problem, the following week, I don't know if I'm gonna be around or not.
The 13th might be good, I mean, they're not gonna work on it over the weekend, but...
It's Friday the 13th.
It is Friday the 13th. Can I wear, can I bring this slasher?
Just leave it on the 16th, because this is obviously...
Let's see how this thing goes a little bit closer to game time, and we can adjust that even all the way up to the 9th. Okay? And we'll make it over that. That's all we got.
All right.
All right, so we'll entertain a motion to go to executive session?
I would make a motion to adjourn pursuant to 6/10.021 for 1, 2, 3, and 14.